Okay, we'll go ahead and um call our work session to order. It's five P M. We're gonna get our um invocation by Ashen Powell.
Dear everybody, thank you for letting us gather here today. We pray that we can show off a little bit of what the city has and some of the youth and what they've done uh so far. And we're just grateful to have them here tonight and attend. And we pray that all of the work be done the way you did in VIT. And do this as we leave here tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, I think we're ready to proceed. So we'll go on to number um three discussion that is necessary by different architectural Ryan Coleman to discuss the land survey proposal from Ray and Gillian P C for the following sites. Area one pool site located at corner of West Eighth Street and Norton Norton Avenue totaling twenty-two hundred dollars. And area two property boarded by Central Avenue Highway Twenty-One, Tenth Street, and Norton Avenue totaling nine thousand five hundred dollars. This will be paid for um by the general fund.
So basically what you're looking at is if you were to move forward with what we're about to talk with on the next agenda item, the first thing the design team needs is a survey to work from. So that's what you're seeing between these two sites. Now I will say with the work that you guys have done previously on the municipal pool site, in my brain, there should be a survey somewhere, so in some capacity. Anytime you do a design exercise like a splash pad, for instance, there should have been a survey. So if you do find that, if someone has that, you can take this off of what's on your list in front of you. Um but this is from a local group, Ray and Gillian, just down the road. And uh this covers everything that we'll need to get started if you were to move forward.
Okay, how long does something like this usually takes?
So he he put in here um that they can begin work three weeks after receiving written notice. But I've I've talked to him that they can get started really, really quickly on it. And I think they will actually have it done before we would even really be diving deep into the site work anyway. So maybe mid-July, something like that. He was comfortable with that.
I like it. Go ahead.
Is there a pool survey already on file? Has there been a survey before? I know we've done some over. Is that is that all?
Yes, that's all. We checked the builder's services. They can um on uh I believe I did check this date again.
We don't have one. As you know, E D T kinda answered that up. So if anybody knows the answer to that question, it would be them.
What about the last time um when we had those people to go back to make sure the pool wasn't able to basically be fixed and used? Was there one done then?
That was E D T.
Oh, so that was E D T.
No, that was our that was our group.
I didn't think that was E D T.
We had E D T and then we had councilman Hunsack.
Yeah, and in that assessment, the survey is not required. And they're just looking at your facility.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions um regarding that now?
Um, not on that one, I don't.
This is Laura White.
So the only thing I have to add to that is when you enter into a um a design exercise, like you you potentially are, there's two things that the owner's really responsible for here. It's provide the design team with the survey, that's this. And then a geotech report. Those two things are provided by owners to design teams. In other words, the design team doesn't take on the liability of the geotechnical report. They don't take on the liability of the survey.
So that's not included in Ray and Gillian's thing? We'd have to go out here and.
No, you're not ready for that. You're not ready for the geo- geotech report would come after there's a building footprint. We can identify the corners. They can go in and take boring samples from these areas. Yep.
Okay. Any more questions, guys?
I'm good on that one.
All right, Ryan, you good on that one?
I'm good.
All right, so we'll move to number four discussion that is necessary by different architectural Ron architecture, Ryan Coleman to enter into phase two basic services with William Blackstone Architects totaling one million seven hundred eighty thousand four hundred dollars paid um from general fund. And I know um I know there's a few questions um about this one. And you are gonna have to update us on it. I know we received the information um a couple of months ago. But so I'll go ahead and let you um just update us on that and then we'll go.
Yeah, and I I might answer some of the questions, I think. Because um so Alex and I met, really the effort through that meeting was if you guys were to start the design process and parallel it with going through the bond proceedings that it would take to go. That that the goal is is all right, well, before the bond is secured, there's gonna be some funds that have to come out of the general fund, I guess, um to pay for design services. So what we did is we sat down and we looked at the the proposal. And I guess you guys all have the proposal, I'm sure you do. And in the proposal, to get to bidding, the bid phase, you have to go through schematic design, design development, and construction documents. And so we totaled up the fee based on the pre- the budget that we had talked about, the one that was presented to you guys. We we came up with a fee associated with that and all the fixed fees that are also in this that are under special services included. And we came up with this number. I just wanna make sure that when you guys are voting on this, you're voting to move forward with phase two and not a fixed fee number. That was to budget, that was to budget you on moving forward. But the reality is, is a building, the mechanical, the architectural, the civil, not the civil, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, the architectural is based on a cost of construction. So that means if you guys ask us to design a building that's bigger than what we had planned for, your fees go up. If you ask us to build a building that's lower or smaller, the fees go down. So it's based on what you ask us to design. It's not a fixed number. Does that make sense?
It does. And remind me, in that, I think that number was like twenty-eight million?
Yeah.
So this is a part of that number?
Yeah, that's right. We we use that number to come up with this this so that you guys know what the budget for to get us through to bidding.
I'm confused, though. We haven't agreed on what it is we're building. We haven't agreed on the amount of money we're gonna spend. So how are we agreeing on a percentage that we're paying for architectural services?
It was based on the proposal. That's that's what he's talking about. The proposal that was shown to everybody, it it was broken down on what we decided we wanted. And then from my understanding, when we're going into this phase, to have the architect to build what we wanted based on that proposal, based on that amount.
Basically, you guys went through a programming exercise, which identifies what it is that you did, you wanna build. That's what was presented to you. So now the option moving forward, if you move forward, you could always come back and say, well, we we hear what you said before, and we did like that scope of work. But if you had a budget number in mind and you were to tell tell us that, we would design a building or look at the program and see what they would need to be cut to get into your budget. Or if you ask us to add things to it. So in my brain, you you definitely have decided what it is that you're going to build. That's what was presented to you two months ago or a month ago.
That's what I um was thinking, too. So um and we can we can ask questions. And let's just do them one at a time, just to make sure everybody's heard and we're all in the same page. So Laura, you can go first with your questions.
Okay, um what the state, y'all go by the state set for it's once it's out for bid for construction is when we'll have the actual cost of your fees, right?
That is correct. It's a percentage. If you go to the um fee percentage, I'm gonna find it real quick, and I can point you to exactly where it's at. Um, I know it's seven percent. Just gotta find which page it's on. But the the crux of it is, yes, it's based on a percentage of cost. So let's say you have a ten thousand square foot building. The cost of construction is a set number based on that. But if it's a hundred thousand square foot building, the cost of the fees go up relative to the size of the building. Yes. And we use the state fee schedule as a basis of giving you a proposal. You guys are not required to use a state fee schedule. That's really based on state-funded projects. We have used it as a basis to give you a proposal. But it doesn't have to always follow that, Laura. But it it is really close to that, what you're looking at.
So this number, though, we we can't vote totally like the way that this is written, we.
You you should be, I really think you should be voting to move forward with phase two.
Instead of the number.
Because the number might be lower than this.
The number can change.
Oh, it it could go lower or it could go higher.
Make sure.
The budget may not be the number. So this, the 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 numbers may not align with what we actually decide to do based on how much money we got.
It's a competitive bid project. So you won't know the number until you competitively bid it. These are estimates, right? So um you, what you do in that case, let's say we budgeted twenty-eight million, but it came in at twenty-six million. Um, we reconcile the design fee number in the last twenty percent, which is construction administration. So that all gets balanced out through this process.
And what are you saying? And from my understanding, what we're voting on or or trying to vote on tonight is based off of the proposal. So we basically, from my understanding, we accepted the proposal. The proposal was a twenty-eight billion dollars. And based on the twenty-eight billion dollars, this is the estimated budget amount. So we can take the dollar amount out of it, but we have to decide whether or not we're gonna move forward with phase two or not. That's that's the question.
We should continue with phase two. It's the number that that's not known yet, correct?
So when will we know an exact exact number? So what what's the timeline on doing it exactly?
Well, knowing the exact number would be when it's bid. That's the exact number. But we'll obviously be doing budgets throughout the course of the projects. We'll be close. We'll be in a range of where it should be at.
And and that's and that's what I was thinking. Because too, also tonight, we're gonna decide, we're gonna have to decide how much money we want to go to the bond market, too. And how much we're gonna actually spend on the community center and on the other project. So listen, so if we if we decide we're gonna spend twenty-eight million dollars, then like you said, it's it's gonna be in that range.
And Ryan, you've dealt with this before. What other wording should we use that allows proceeding to phase two as a function of what the total is, the architectural fees will be paid, without specifying a number at the state?
You you don't specify a number. There's never the, because guess what? If you ask us to 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 add ten thousand square feet, because there's something that you guys want, then then the design team gets compensated for it. So it's really just moving forward with phase two. We've got a budget number in place right now um to work from. Like I said, you reconcile the final number at the end. And also what I I wanna mention, too, is when you move forward with phase two, the first thing that'll be up is we'll be working with when, because there'll be an A I A contract that's actual, the formal agreement, based on this proposal. The A I A contract is typical between the owner and the architect. And so we'll be sending, we end the A I A contract review to to be the formal agreement between the city and the design team.
But if we move forward with phase two without mentioning the amount, that's fine. And there's no, we're not committing to do anything until we open the bids, right?
So. Yeah, yeah, you'll be paid. So you'll be paying the design team through the design portion of the project. That's one other thing I wanna mention, because this is important. And I think Stephen Allen's mentioned this several times to you guys. But this initial phase is schematic design, design development, and construction documents. When we're finished with schematic design, we will ask you guys for approval to move forward. So if you look at schematic design, it's twenty percent of the fee. So when we get through schematic design, and the schedule is actually in this proposal, we'll be looking for you guys to tell us to move forward. You could tell us to stop, and all you've paid is twenty percent of the design fee, the estimated design fee.
So so with all that being said, does, you know, we're gonna come up with a number tonight, a number to go to the market with. So does this need to be put off, to be put off on the next agenda, to come up with this number and to vote on moving forward with phase two? Or do we just wanna vote to move forward with phase two and then voting the number at the next meeting?
I don't think we're gonna have a specific number. I got the bomb on.
So Nate, it's very typical for projects to do value engineering during schematic design. If you guys choose to move forward, and then let's say in the end of July, you come back and tell Steve or someone that, hey, look, the budget is this. We we adjust during that. It's it's not something that stops the project. Every project goes through value engineering at some point.
I know, but that's, but we're also supposed to decide the number tonight as well, too.
I thought it was the budget, though. We don't know the exact number until the.
I know, I I understand.
She's talking about a number to go to the market with.
Yeah, to decide what we wanna have. Because whatever we decide we want to spend, if it's over that, then Steve's gonna um have to get with you and figure out how to take something out to get it to that number. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Every every project.
Tim, what I'm saying is I don't think we have to decide on that. Yeah, we just have to decide on the bond people and that we're feeling. We don't have to decide.
I know. I I understand what all of you guys are saying. And and I'm on board with taking the number out. But what I'm saying, I'm just trying to make sure everybody know where the number come from. The number come from the proposals that we paid, you know, and we.
I'm just talking about the overall amount that we're going after. We don't have to.
But we are on the same page to go to phase two, right?
All right, I'm just gonna take the number up.
Okay. All right.
Hi.
Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, page six, special services included.
Yes, ma'am.
And you had talked about needing that.
Yeah, so that's, then that that exercise that Alex and I with there is very important. So I looked at the design fees, which the seven percent, things that don't change based on building size or the size of your property that you're asking the civil engineer to work on. So that's why he's covered in special services. He's a lump sum. So we included those, all those special services that would be needed for bidding are already built into that nu- that budget number that that Alex gave you guys.
And Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Be sure I understand what you're saying. The question is, am I correct that the budget figure at the end of all this is, let's say it's twenty percent less than than what supposedly, and you take that number and take seventy percent of that, correct?
That is correct. That that's twenty percent, missing by twenty percent would be a travesty. I don't think we would get that. That would be that much of a difference. But if you look at the, on phase two under basic services on page five, services A, B, C, D, and E, that's just like it is in the state fee schedule. Twenty percent is saved for construction administration, which is basically the architects and design team coming out to the site, making sure the contractor is building it to the specifications that's are out are outlined. So that last twenty percent of the fee is where we negotiate the delta between the proposed budget and our fees that we've charged and what the actual bid number is. So we would make up the difference in that twenty percent of the fee at the end. So if you spent a million dollars, um and that's eighty percent of the fee, and you've got twenty percent left, and the project came in at five percent less, our construction administration fee would shrink. We would make up the difference during that last twenty percent of the fee. Yeah, it'd go up, if it go, if, no doubt. It also goes up if the council or someone adds scope to the work. So if they add scope to the building, the fee goes up. That works just like that.
Okay, let me say what I'm saying aloud. Um, so does it make sense? And and I see what you're saying. And I see that it can change. And we don't know how much material it's gonna cost. We don't know what the bids are gonna come back. So would it make sense to budget the building a certain percentage under our targeted amount?
I think it makes sense for you guys to budget what was presented to you guys. Yeah, if that's if the number that we gave you guys before is what you should be budgeting. If we need to reduce that number, you need to tell us.
Yeah, and that that's that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking. Either that number is gonna have to be reduced, or we're gonna have to ask for a certain percentage more, a little bit more, because we're gonna have to make sure we're prepared for bill material to be increased.
So.
Remind me about your budget. Did you anticipate any percentage of possible change orders?
Contingencies, yeah. Every project carries a contingency percentage that's built into the budget, correct?
Okay. All right. So do we have any more questions um for Ryan on this?
Ryan, I got one. I'm sure you have things in place to make sure we're cost efficient, things are going in the right direction once we get this started on phase two.
Yeah, that's.
Make sure we're getting most of our money.
That's the responsibility of the design team. We will, that'll be top of mind the whole process. And we'll.
And I trust you with it.
And there'll be constant communication made between the design team. And that's the advantage of part, this kind of partnership, is there's a local person here that's going to advocate for both sides.
I do, I do, I do have another question. I'm sorry. Alex, on the um, the paper you and I were just looking at, are there dates on that? Is that a timeline? Or is it just a um, a timeline or a dollar amount? Is there, is it like?
It is our own.
It is, okay.
How many months?
Two months, two months.
And then we'll know how.
There is months next to it, yes.
Okay, and then we'll know, actually, too, or whatever month, we'll know how much is due, because it's um on the timeline. That's when each payment is due. So then we'll know where we are on schedule.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. And then you'll tell us whether or not to move forward. If there's a problem, and we're at the schematic design, let's say we build schematic design, you have to tell us to move forward, indeed.
But what I'm saying is, this is what I'm saying, and y'all tell me if you don't agree, we still, we still have to have some money put aside for this. Because because we have, we have this estimated amount. Does that make sense? So we see this amount. So we know it's gonna be costly. So we still, we can't be, we can't go into this blindly. We still have to have some money put aside for these things.
That's right.
If that makes sense. That that's how I'm looking at it. And I know we wanna take a dollar amount out, but we still gotta have something put aside.
To start off the race with.
If that makes sense.
Ryan, I'm I'm good listening. I don't have any other questions around.
Are you listening to me, Lee? But do you agree? We don't, I mean, we don't have to say this is how much we're gonna pay him, but some money needs to be over here for that. We gotta put some money somewhere.
Well, I think we can reserve that, but I don't think we need to commit to spending something. We have to get this back.
All right, so so are we gonna reserve this amount that's on this paper? Or does it need to be a different amount? I just don't wanna agree to something and need, we're we're trying to find the money to pay for while we go to the bond market, if that makes sense.
Is this not part of the reimbursable from the bond?
Yeah, I I personally don't, I think it would be a mistake to put an amount on, because it's not.
But we're, we're not talking about you. So this is is for you, but it's not for you. I'm trying to, I'm saying like, we.
Oh, for the bond, for the project.
We need to be prepared, yeah.
That's right. And we have to reimburse that amount per that resolution.
Let me ask you, but Alex, we, we have this amount, uh, a month, we have this amount set aside for this already, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Okay, that answered my question. And then as we go down the timeline, if it increases or goes down, we can um, we can adjust accordingly. Does that make sense?
Adjust, adjust the budget.
Okay, all right. Sorry.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, I guess we're all good. All right. All right, so number five, discussion by municipal judge Taylor Far to request permanent appointment of Austin B. Smith as the public defender for municipal court for the city of Sulicaga and to discuss salaries.
I have a question about that. Why?
Judge Far is not here. He's in a deposition right now. Um, but the city council several months ago appointed temporarily Austin Smith to see if he was going to be a good fit for the court. Um, it has now uh been decided that he is a good fit. He's adjusted way open. He would now like to permanently appoint him.
Okay, when it, when you said permanently, does that, does how, permanent means forever and ever?
Permanent until we don't have him anymore or he doesn't want to assist the city.
So is there a turn on that position? I think that's what, is there a turn on that position?
No, ma'am, there's not.
Is this, is this normal practice? I've got a judge and a lawyer in here. Is it when?
I couldn't hear exactly what you were saying.
They want to permanently appoint someone to the municipal court to discuss and uh as a public defender.
Well, I mean, he he can't keep it forever.
He wanted to try.
But it says permanent.
Yeah, it's it's take, it's technically, we're we're hiring him to do the job. That's what it is. Maybe that permanently, that's worth him.
Temporary.
Yeah, so we're we're hiring him.
Okay, I'm good. I just need a little clarification.
So we're just hiring him in a permanent position.
When the new council shows up, we'll go over all this with them, and then they will decide if they want to be the same people or not.
Thank you, sir.
I was a public defender in this court here for eight or nine years.
Oh, my.
My understanding was that they could replace me anytime they wanted to.
And I'm sure that's the same now here, what I've just heard. So thanks, Lynn.
All right, any questions about that?
No, ma'am.
All right, number six, the discussion that is necessary by state to enter into an agreement with East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission for fiscal year twenty-five funding totaling ninety-one thousand fifteen dollars for section fifty through eleven, non-urbanized area of public transportation related to transit service. And Alex, um, from my understanding, this is just something that we can't control. This is just a time of year that this happens and.
That's correct. This is for fiscal year twenty-five. In order to apply for the grant, we need the council to approve the resolution, which is on the agenda for tonight. It's for the same amount we did last year, ninety-one thousand fifteen dollars.
Yeah, and it's always out of budget cycle. And this money is gonna come from.
Uh, eight twenty.
And this money is gonna come from?
When you approve the new budget for fiscal year twenty-five, this will come off the top.
Yeah, and there's n- there's nothing we can do about it. Okay, any questions on that, guys?
No, ma'am.
All right, number seven, update by city attorney, Lynn Livingston, on status of property located at three seventeen West Third Street.
Okay, uh, I was authorized to begin eviction process against the owner. Uh, I've done that. First, you'd have to give a notice and serve him with it. And you'd have to wait for fourteen days to pass for him to have an opportunity to to pay what's behind instead. And uh, so that won't be for another two weeks. He was served yesterday. And then at that time, you all will be able to decide whether you halfway believe him, that he's gonna be out by July fifteenth.
Come on. Didn't we go over this like two or three months ago?
We started trying to agree with him.
Yeah, but I thought the notice had already been issued. So yesterday was the first day you received the first notice?
Yeah, well, it was, he was out of town a lot. And the process server didn't, had to go back on the day he was in there. He's still operating. But my suggestion is that uh if he's, he's made progress of getting the building emptied by the time we can file the lawsuit, you might wanna reconsider it. Because if it files it, I don't know if he's gonna hire a lawyer, which will cost the city a bunch of money. Uh, but I'm not saying you don't need to sue him if he doesn't get out. I'm just telling you, maybe there's a possible suit.
Well, I thought from, but I thought from the understanding, since he didn't go along with the original agreement, now that he's still there, we do want the back, we do want him to pay the back pay money whether he leaves or not.
Yeah.
So isn't the goal, so we want, we want possession back of the property, but he still owes the money, right?
And we'll have to sue him. The lawsuit can't be filed until after the fifteenth, until the fifteenth day.
Okay.
We'll file it the fifteenth day, ask him for the back pay to get.
I just wanna make sure, because I know you said that we wanted to give him fourteen days to get out or pay. But we want him to leave no matter what, right?
That's yours, yeah.
That's what we discussed. He's gotta, he's gotta get out. We discussed that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
He's had quite a few chances.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we'll just get an update at the next council meeting on um.
Yes, that'll be the fifteenth day. No, the next council meeting is later than that. Yeah. It should be already filed on there.
You got something else?
And he is operating in the city without current business license again.
Well, we're still kinda behind date, but we've served eviction. There's ain't ain't much we can do about that. It's just gotta run its course.
But he is still in there.
Thank you, Lynn. Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, number eight, discussion that is necessary by council member Brewer Brewer to appoint Jeff Turner, District Three, to the Nonsense Abatement Board. Term runs concurrent with city council. Any questions on um Jeff Turner being appointed to the Nonsense Abatement Board for District Three? All right, so number nine, discussion that is necessary by council member Fowler to appoint Mitzi Smith, District One, to the Nonsense Abatement Board. Board terms run concurrent with city council. We talked today. Any um questions about that? All right, and I think there's still, um, leave your district. How many people are you looking for, one or two?
Two now.
All right.
You have that next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so number ten, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert to appoint members to the airport authority board, Sulicaga healthcare authority and utilities board. Alex, um.
Yes, ma'am. We had two members reapply for the airport authority, um, Mr. Gasper and Judge Horr. Um, it's our recommendation that we just reappoint those two individuals. There's nobody else applied. Um, for the Sulicaga healthcare authority, Judge Chad Joyner applied. Um, nobody else applied. And for the utilities board, Michael Adair applied, and nobody else applied. So it's our recommendation that we go um to appoint those individuals to the city.
All right, sounds good. Any questions on those, guys? No? Yes, ma'am?
Sound good.
All right. Number eleven, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding a financial management policy. All right, Alex, you wanna um?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I recently attended a budgeting class um in Tuscaloosa. And while we were there, the discussion of bonds came up. And it was asked and recommended that anybody current that did not have a policy in place that says how we do the budgets for each year, that we get one in place. And it would also help going toward the bond market, because it's it's broken up into six different categories. The budgeting policy, basically, you would have a budget by one October. It would go over debt management, how much debt the city can have. The reserve balances, if we have any money left over, that it'll go toward the ten percent into reserves in case we have a bad year, which we're currently doing right now. Not that we're having a bad year, but the ten percent does, does go in reserves. Um, it also talks about capital improvement policies, um auditing, financial reporting, and then that the city clerk's office works with the underwriter um and make sure that we're following through once the bond is issued, to make sure we're paying it on time, and that there's no issues.
Hi.
Hello, guys.
Is this something that you worked on presenting, uh, policy?
Sir, it's, it's done. It was sent on Friday. Um, we're not asking the council to vote on it. We're just asking if you guys have any questions. And to make it a resolution at the next meeting, um, so that when we do go to the bond market, it's already in place.
So looking over that, Alex. So, looking over that, Alex, and I, you know, it may take me a little minute, other, more than others, but what is the end goal of that resolution that, that, why is that so important now?
Oh, the end goal is we're getting ready to head to the bond market, and we want, um, the banks and everybody who's gonna loan us the money to have confidence in the city that we do have the funds, that we are following procedures, and that you guys are following to be just be responsible.
Okay, so if we, if we don't put this resolution into place, then they may...
If they come back and ask us, it's just our word. We don't have anything in writing.
Okay, but with this resolution, it holds our feet to the fire, and then it gives them a little bit of easement, knowing that we're gonna do what we say we're gonna do because we have this resolution in place.
Yes, sir, and it would also help the constituents to know that you guys have something, you're going by now.
I'm comfortable with the concept, but not that the language is presented. This is moving too fast for us to do something this formal without further ado.
I'll be more than happy to sit down with you if you want to go over it and, um...
I'd like to have legal review as well.
Yes, alright, hold on, I'm gonna go one at a time, so everybody's, um, heard.
But it's four of you right now, though, we're not doing anything tonight, right?
That's right, can you, so you're gonna send that to Lynn, you brought it to the council, you can send that to Lynn, let Mr. Livingston look at it, give you a thumbs up, and then bring it back to us.
Okay.
Is that good for you, Lynn?
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to ask a question.
I'm sorry, forgive me.
So, so I know you're saying that, you know, you went to the class and they're recommending this, so is this just a recommendation, or is this something that has to be done, because we, we, um, we've never done it before? But we went to the bond market before and we didn't, you know, we didn't have any issues, so what's gonna make this different from the last time that we went to the bond market?
Times are changing. Um, my law office is new. Uh, we're gonna have a new council in a year, maybe, maybe not, might be all you guys, but this will hold everybody's feet to the fire.
But this, but this wouldn't prevent us from going to the bond market, it's just something, it's just something good to have in place. So even if we weren't able to get it done, you know, this time around going to the bond market, is it something you're still interested in putting into place?
We are.
And that kinda makes sense, I think she said, but we could all be, we could all be gone, and then the next council come in, and then they see that we don't have anything in place, but then we do, so that would make it, uh, hold those people's feet to the fire.
But you... Alright, you got something similar? I mean, they could always rescind it.
Yep.
Alright, so, any more questions on that?
Oh, I'm good.
And maybe, Alex, we may just need to, um, sit down and just discuss it a little more so you can explain it to, because it's new to us too, we've never seen it, so it's, it's nothing we've ever seen or ever done, so maybe we just need to, um, add it to the next work session or something so we can go over. Alright, everybody good and ready to move to the, um, next item?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, I think it's, um, number twelve, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-three, which provides for an allocation of the additional revenue generated by the provisions of ordinance twenty-two fifty-seven dash twenty-three.
Yes, so, going to the bond market, um, we decided to start reading some of our previous resolutions. Resolution twenty-three twenty-two-three was adopted on the sixteenth of May. However, the wording is not as specific as it should have been. Um, and it is in packets. That's the one where, this resolution is where we earmarked money by a certain percentage to departments for various reasons, to include paving, debt. However, the wording says the first four million generated will go toward paving, debt, reserve, police, fire, recreation, capital, and infrastructure and street. However, after the first four million, fifty percent goes to the general fund, the other fifty percent goes to capital improvement projects. This is not an annual requirement that we do this for the departments. At this rate, on September thirtieth, we're not going to reimburse four million, we're still at one point seven. I think there's confusion about this resolution because I know a lot of departments are planning each year to get their allocated percentage.
And that's not what this resolution says?
Not what this resolution states.
So what it's saying is after the first four million total collectively, that's it, and then fifty percent of the sales tax goes into the general fund, and fifty goes into the, um...
Special projects. That's correct, this is not an annual requirement.
Alright, and we'll start asking what...
Saying next year we wouldn't have any, we could not have any earmarked funds according to that resolution.
After the first four million, there aren't any earmarked funds, that's what this resolution...
Yeah, I know that, she's saying next year.
Because everybody's under the assumption this is annual, and it's not.
It's not, it's just for this right now.
It's not, it, it's just for the first four million, so it's not even a, it's not even a this year or a next year thing, it's the first four million, and that's it.
Period.
Yeah, so say we, say you reach four million in December, and that's it, there's no more allocated money after December, or something can happen and we can reach four million?
It's not the next four million in twenty-five or twenty-six.
It's not, it's not how it is. So, hold on, so let's, let's go one at a time, so...
Which way are you starting?
I'm gonna start on this one, because Ashley's...
No, fine, I get it, I get what she's saying, it's not annual, so therefore the planning aspect that departments are trying to do is kinda void at this point because it's not as the resolution for it, it's not the case, so.
Alright, so...
We do need to change it some, whatever we need to do, we need to look at it.
So that's what, and I think this is something that we need to discuss during budget time, this is something that needs to be discussed during budget time, not right now, but everybody needs to know the wording of this resolution so that there's no confusion, um, moving forward.
So, one, once departments hit the first, hits their allocation, I'll use the PD.
Once four million dollars, it doesn't, it, it's not like department, once we, once we've got an additional four million dollars off the sales tax,
Right.
then all this goes away.
Got you, and then we go to operating, like we used to, everything comes out of the general fund?
Yes.
Got you, right.
Fifty percent, of the general, and fifty percent would go to special projects.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm good.
Alright, Lynn?
I don't see any reason to make a change, we need, need to deal with it during budget.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree with Mr. P.
Laura?
I think we just need to deal with it here in budget as well.
Alright, but everybody understands, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Alright, number thirteen, discussion that's needed, necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert to pay off the twenty-two-three A warrant with trust totaling six hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cent, increases forty-nine, forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents per day after June twentieth, twenty-two-four, paid from bond and interest account. And Alex and I, um, talked about this, and, um, she'll explain, so this is one of the bonds that we already have in place, and, um, the goal is to pay this one off, so once we go to the bond market, you know, we can have a lower payment rather than stacking all these bond payments together, and we have the money to pay this off. Did I say that correctly?
You did, and, um, the city currently is responsible for five bonds. Um, however, talking with Dr. Osborne, wherever he went, he's over there, they're going to try to, um, assume their bonds beginning in October. Then the city would be responsible for three.
Okay, and, and I think that may be something, let, let me ask you, so, we have to decide that, right? The council has to decide to give them, um, responsibility of that bond, or...
No, he will hire a bondsman, and they will take care of it between them.
So is, is this the one that we're, um, they're paying through us?
Their avalorum.
Okay.
So they would get all the avalorum, um, and we're still talking about that, we would still get the money, and then we would give him the, the money, so...
He would just let the list instead of stopping with us.
Correct.
Alright, and you're, and you talked with Alex, and everybody's on the board with this. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Alright, getting back to this, um, we did get the payoff that we attached for every day after the twentieth. If the council doesn't decide to pay that, this off early, that's fine, but if you do, and we don't make a payment by the twentieth, we incur a loss, obviously, of fifty dollars a day, and all that is included, um... But it makes sense because we do have the money to do this.
And if we decide to pay it off today, this is the amount, the six hundred ninety-three thousand?
Yes, ma'am, for the payoff that was, um...
What you're saying, if you don't pay that whole thing, and then come, we pay part of it, and come June twentieth, we start occurring fifty dollars a day?
Right, that's correct.
But we can pay it all off.
You can pay it all off, and there is money in the bond and interest account, which is the purpose of, to pay off our bonds.
Alright, any questions on this, guys? Are we, um, agreed that we got it?
I agree.
Now, that account, that's not, is that where all of our debt service comes from, where we pay debt service?
Yes, sir.
So that's not gonna hold us down on the other bonds we have to pay debt service? There's still more, more of that?
There's plenty.
Okay.
That's correct.
And this is gonna, keep in mind, this is gonna keep our payment as low as possible, it's not gonna be at the top of the new, um, bond payment. Laura and Lynn, you guys have any questions on this?
I don't think so.
Alright, so we'll go to number fourteen, it's an add item discussion that's necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert to hire an accounting clerk at a step three, and Alex, you wanna, um, explain why?
Yes, ma'am, um, we, the civil service board, I believe, ended up getting interviews last Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we had three applicants, um, and we're happy with two. We would like to hire one Thursday, and speaking with a jar, we can do that. Um, she doesn't meet any of the parameters to get an additional step. However, the individual, Heather Long, currently has twenty years of credit, I think. She has twenty years' experience with accounts payable and accounts receivable. I've interviewed her, and we've had our discussion, and we would like to hire her to step three. The reason we're coming to the council is the policy still has not changed for the personnel policies and procedures, and it specifically states if the mayor and the department head determine that individuals documented job-related qualifications justify a higher level of pay, the mayor and city council may approve an entry level of up to three steps of pay. Until a policy is changed, we have to come back to the council.
Or approval.
Um, or approval.
Alright, so, Nick, you wanna start your question?
Please, um, Ms. Alex, just two questions.
Yes, sir.
Does she have any finance or any kind of experience in government at all?
No, sir, but accounts payable, you're paying bills, accounts receivable, you're taking money in. She also has payroll experience, workman comp experience, handling cash, deposits,
Okay.
um, accounting for money to the penny, which, as you're aware, um, we need some assistance in as well.
And then, and then, and that's what she'll be doing here, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's exactly what's...
So she'll be doing the same thing she's been doing for twenty years, just in your office?
Yes, sir, and, and it's gonna change a little bit because we do things differently than a hospital, but, um, the overall concept is the same, yes.
Okay, and she's been doing it for twenty years?
Yes, sir.
Twenty years, oughta say something, guys.
Alright, Ashley, do you have any questions? Laura, Lynn, so are we, um, we're good with this?
I, I am.
Alright, number fifteen, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert to hire a consultant to advise and assist with administrative and financial relative items as necessary. Effective June twentieth, twenty-two-four until September thirtieth, twenty-two-four, funding will, um, come from unused salaries. Alex, you wanna explain that one?
Yes, ma'am, we've been, um, as you're aware, shorthanded for almost, well, it's over a year now. We have somebody who has been a previous city clerk for a minimum of seven years, she's a certified public accountant. We did meet her, Nicole Brown and I, when we went to the budgeting class. She teaches the finance people, um, for the CGAAP, which is the Certified Governmental Accounting Program. She balances the bank accounts, she was the city clerk, the treasurer, um, and we would like to hire her as a consultant to help with the city clerk's office, um, reconciling bank accounts, um, providing guidance, um, wording on resolutions if we need it, whatever we may need that she has experience with.
And this is, um, this day range because it's gonna be during the twenty-four unused salaries.
Yes, sir, that's correct, there is funding available.
And then you also say that she was retired, so, um, she could only make a certain amount?
That's correct.
So that makes sure only work?
It's part-time, yeah, so it's, it's part-time, she can only, um, make a certain amount. Lynn, um, ask the question, how much are we gonna, um, pay this consultant?
Fifty dollars an hour. She's a certified CPA.
And, and that money will come from unused salaries, I'm, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
How many hours are we expecting using in this six-month period?
Um, well, I would like her to help balance the remaining six accounts. Um, I did talk with our auditors about two of the accounts, um, and we're not sure how to balance them. They're not sure how to balance them, um, but she does have experience to do it.
So will the hours vary in the beginning? Do you expect to use more in the beginning, or do you expect her to use her full amount of hours every week? I think that's what the question is.
No, I do expect to use her more in the beginning, um, and she would also help, um, the accounting specialist, um, who was kinda thrown into that job with no experience as well, to make sure...
There'd be a cap, I guess, on your total.
Yeah.
On you, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't know if you're saying you're gonna throw all your unused salaries at her, and it's gonna be fifty dollars an hour to those unused salaries, right? Is there gonna be a cap?
We're gonna use her until we need her, until we don't need her anymore, um, but council can cap her, that's what you guys decide to do.
So what are, what are you proposing? What are you, how many hours do you think you're going to need her, just based off talking to her and wanting to hire her, how many hours are you thinking? And what's the dollar amount? Oh, I mean, we can add it up, but how many hours are you thinking that you're gonna need her starting off every week?
Um, part-time, probably twenty hours a week.
I just think it's a little unfair that we hope, we didn't open it up to get, you know, multiple...
I have to open up a consultant, um, we don't need that, it's not required.
We have a qualified city clerk in place, I don't understand why we need a second one for fifty an hour.
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
Laura, if we have a qualified city clerk in place, I don't understand why we need a second one for fifty an hour.
She's saying we're shorthanded, we've been shorthanded for over a year, and the amount of work that she received and that she's having to do, and now we're about to go to the bond market.
Could be more work added on to that office.
And this person is experienced, she used to be a city clerk, I think that's what the, um...
It would be extremely beneficial.
For us.
For the city.
Yes.
Yes, sir, um, in the beginning, we even had, uh, Mr. Osborne come over and help us with some bank accounts and other items as well, um... So we are reaching out as much as possible to other city clerks too, but this will help the city.
True.
And if we can't go to the bond market until these accounts are reconciled, I don't have an answer as to when.
And this is just until you're, you're fully staffed, or, yeah?
Are we doing exit interviews, by the way, for the people leaving, are we doing?
We ain't done an exit interview since we've been on the council.
And I think that's a question we should be asking Jane, okay, yeah, I think that's a Jane question, right? HR should do that, that's a Jane question. So maybe we can add that to the, um, what's the step she can update us on? Yeah, and there's no additional...
I, I agree with you guys.
And also too, this also says that, um, if we're still shorthanded, when September comes, she'll have to come back and ask again, she can't roll over after September.
That's correct, nobody can.
Alright, so any more questions about number fifteen?
I'm good.
So number sixteen, financial status update by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert.
Yes, so, in your packets.
Okay, Alex, I do have one question, um, or one more question. Since we're agreeing to bring this person in, um, would you just be sure to update us on the progress in your office since, um, since the new person, the one's been...
We would be more than that, Karen.
Let's just do that, so we can just, I don't know if I should say this out loud, see what we're paying for.
Nope, that's fine, this is fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We can go ahead, go ahead and go back to the next one, sorry.
Okay, so, on your packets, we can go through them, this talks about the five different warrants, um, two for the, the school, and three for the city, and, um, our recommendation obviously was to pay off the two thousand thirteen, um, warrant. Page two, we did a calculated analysis, um, for the bonds, do you want to talk about that later?
Um, I think we, um...
Page two.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Maybe we should go ahead and, um, let's go ahead and do it.
Okay, so if the city were to, um, take out a forty million dollar bond for resolution seventy-one, twenty-two-three, if, these are very conservative interest rates, um, if the interest rate was four point four four percent, the city would end up paying back seventy-five million dollars. And we broke it up into five million dollar increments, all the way down to fifteen million, and you can see that in front of you.
And this is just based on a, a random interest rate, because we don't know what interest rate we're gonna get?
Correct, I, uh, correct, I did contact some other municipalities... Correct, I, uh, correct. I did contact some other municipalities. Um, and one got a bond recently for four point three nine, so we went up, you know, a half a percent. But it could be over five, it could be lower. This is just an estimate, just so that we can get an idea, um, so we know what we're gonna be paying back roughly. Page three is the budget status by department. The percentages are over on the right-hand side. Um, planning and building services, um, they're a little on the high side for spending.
Hold on, I think that's page four. Our page three is different. That's page four.
Yeah, our page three is the mayor's list.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, so the mayor's list, um, was what the mayor was asking the city council to add to the bond the other day, two weeks ago. He's prioritized his ranking from one through fifteen, um, for, um, from his most important item, um, which would be paving and drainage are the top two for the city, all the way down to number fifteen.
Why, why is the food world on here? What is this six hundred fifty thousand dollars for, for that dilapidated building?
It's tearing down.
Okay.
But yeah, this is the mayor's list, this isn't, we don't have to submit this list, this is just, yeah.
We also... Yeah, um, the fire department, they are in significant need of a truck. Um, Nate can probably elaborate a little more on that than I can.
This is not the one truck, this is an additional into the one, we've already got motion.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it's my understanding that Nate is gonna look for some stock trucks.
Yeah, he's got, he'll talk about that, he's got one.
Is that, um, is that on here to talk about?
I was, sorry.
I was on where?
Okay.
So it's not.
Alright, so let me ask you this. So we have a lot of things to do tonight and a lot of decisions to make. So when would this list need to be prioritized, and when would we need to have a number to go to the bond market? Four.
The first thing we need to do is to establish an underwriter.
I know, I, well, that's, that's what, that's on the agenda to do tonight, so after that's done, is that, we just need to ask the underwriter that? Okay, alright, so we still have time to prioritize this list?
Yes, there's plenty of time to prioritize.
Alright.
He actually has one truck here, uh, the police department is, is, um, a used truck for ten hundred fifty thousand. We've been borrowing, uh, Hollins and Oak Grove fire trucks, because ours have been down.
Wait, did they give you details? Okay. Alright.
Okay, so, I need to keep this list.
You need to keep that whole page.
I know, but this is scary.
Are, are we going to this then, or are we still on the layers?
No, we can, we can flip the pages, because we're, we're gonna prioritize that list. Alright, so we're ready for your page three, Alex.
Okay, I'm on the same packet, you are now. Um, so the next one is by departments, how much they budgeted for, how much they paid, their uncomfort, their balance. Um, as I said, planning and building services, they're not spending as fast. Um, and that's just because of manic, they were short-staffed in the beginning as well. Um, so they look like they'll have some money left over, um, by September thirtieth.
So is, um, is something going undone, since we're short-staffed there, and we're not using the budget, um, mighty? So they're still operating and everything?
They're still operating, um, and we did transfer the nuisance money to the police department. Um, so they're not spending as fast either, but we're getting ready to start all that, um, with Officer Holt.
Yeah, he's got some big projects coming up.
He does.
We're very thankful for.
But court, police, and fire, and animal shelter, shop are significantly over. Is this timing issue or overtime or?
I'm sorry?
The, the court, police, fire, and shop have a smaller percentage, significantly smaller percentage available, is it because they've had overtime expenses, or is it just not?
The court has overtime expenses, which the council agreed would come out of unused salaries.
What about the police and fire?
Shop.
Shop.
So, so hold on, so is all this, is, is this just a, this is just for salaries, or is this their total budget?
This is their total budget.
Okay, but some things may have already been done that don't have to be done again.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not repairing things, so that, I mean, so, it's kinda, yeah, it's kinda difficult to judge, because some of these, yeah.
Right, it's, it's shop, I mean, he's had a lot of repairs lately that he hasn't taken care of. But he's always on target.
Right.
And the police and fire, they just have a lot of large contracts that they have to pay for.
Which, which department, so we know the court about the overtime, because they're short-staffed, who else is, um, suffering from or incurring a lot of overtime at their departments due to state?
State clerk.
So is court, you guys, and who else? Is anybody else?
Police Department.
I know we just hired, didn't we just hire?
I believe he's still...
I think Taylor said he's worn in like eight officers in the last something.
Last time I checked, it was still six. Did the number change, sir? Are you still six short, or how many are you short?
Seven.
Seven.
So do we have any applications? Anybody testing? We got in the, um...
We have two applications, and they're not certified.
So you gotta send them to the academy?
If they make it through, they have, they, they've only asked the physical, but wait and test.
Okay, well, that's still good, I mean, we still got applicants, okay? Alright, any more persons on this? Alright, okay, Alex?
The bank accounts, um, so we have been working to reconcile the bank accounts. Um, of the twenty-six, we're down to six still. Um, however, one, we've balanced from twenty-two and twenty-three, and we are working on twenty-four right now. Fiscal year twenty-four, so we're almost done with an additional one, and that'll be five.
So even though you're having to reconcile these and balance them, you still have to balance all twenty-six every month, right?
All twenty-six every month to the penny, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And that's, um, downloading the bank statements, going into Springbrook and downloading the month, whatever the month statement from Springbrook, and then comparing the two, and trying to figure out if there's checks that haven't cashed and cleared, and why. If, um, I'll just pick on the police department, just because, if they, you know, put a wrong GL on an account, then we gotta figure out why and get with them, so it can be corrected.
Alright.
So it's not as... If it's not an X, it's not balanced?
Sir?
If it's not an X, it's not, it's not reconciled?
That's correct, so if you look at the credit card number five, the credit card clearing account, it's in red, it's not balanced from twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four.
Question then, how did we pass the twenty-twenty-two audit if all the reconciliations were not completed?
Sir, without, that was before my turn.
Well, we can't, we can't have a twenty-twenty-two audit if the reconciliation's not completed, it was provided to us. Unless that was listed as an exception in the audit.
Maybe a question for the auditor.
Maybe so, and then too, keep in mind, these are balanced every month. Something may have happened with these accounts, the reason these six aren't balanced, and that's what we're working on. And I think that's why we're bringing in extra help to try to get these accounts balanced, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and they have to be balanced every month, maybe they weren't balanced when they did the twenty-twenty-two audit. And this, is this...
But the Springbrook balance, Mr. Paragon, for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and the bank statement for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, they're not even close. Get them out.
And so these are the same accounts, though, for the past three years, so it's not like it's something out of the ordinary, it's only one that's, that's off. And, and looking at this sheet, guys, um, and I hope, I hope we can all agree and stay on the same page. This is why we don't need to be contacting Alex to do additional work or additional, additional research for us. So if it hasn't been approved by the council, the council as a whole, we don't need to ask for it, or if the mayor didn't ask her to do it, we do not need to call on Alex or anybody in her department to do research, or to be printing files, or asking, having her search for additional stuff that has not been approved by everybody. That's, that's a waste of time and resources.
And unfair in that office.
Yeah. Hopefully, we can agree to that.
I agree with you.
Alright, so Alex, just keep us updated, um, every month on these accounts, and hopefully, by adding some help to your office, we can figure out why we're not able to balance these six accounts.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any more questions on this, y'all? Lee, Lauren? Alright. And we talked about this one, the next one, the resolution twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three, and we decided that we're just gonna talk about this during budget time, right?
That's true.
Okay.
Alright.
I know there was one thing, I know we're still going, uh, go ahead, we still have a few more sheets, go ahead, Alex, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna skip the next one. We'll address that in a little while. Um, it's my understanding, um, that we have in the past donated funding for the World Series for baseball. Um, we went back to the August second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting, and we did donate, um, four hundred dollars to that team when they did go. So we've been approached to do some research and just, um, come to the council and ask if that's something we would be interested in again. Um, because this is a, so it looks like a park and rec team, and there are earmarked monies available, the recommendation would be to use some earmarked money for both the six-year and the eleven-year.
Since it's, um, the park and rec, Steve, do you, um...
It's the year to go.
Do you have something?
It's the year to go, yes, sir.
Do you, um, I don't know if they've asked you, did they ask you, or are you requesting that some money to be given to these teams to help with travel?
It's historically been done. I, I personally haven't had conversations with the coaches about it. Um, I think that Hunter has talked to them, um, but historically, the city has given them money to go to the World Series.
And we, and they, um, and we've had some people to reach out to some of us too, as well, to ask, and I don't know how everybody else feel, since it's a park and rec team, since it's, you know, and you guys fall under us, and if you want to give a certain amount, I just feel like it should have been taken out of the, um, the allocated money, but that's just me. I think, um...
You mean the, the sales tax allocated money?
Yeah, for the park and rec, or...
You agree with that?
I agree.
So, but what, what amount are you planning to, or?
Well, historically, and, you know, once you do this, you're setting the precedent, because we still have half of our teams that haven't even played states yet. So there could be two to three more teams that make it to the World Series.
But I think, I think the, um, I think the way it came up was, you know, we, we did do it for another team, so that's why we have to be careful what we do, and, I mean, but it's a big deal, too, it is a big deal.
I've been here fifteen years, this is, we've had two other teams make it to the World Series.
Yeah, and I mean, they aren't our kids, so I guess we'll just, um, guys, what do you wanna do?
I ran into Philip Morris, just talked with him about it, and that this county commission did last time, they're willing to match it.
So, so will they give it to both teams, or will they just give the one?
Yeah, these two teams are just the ones that...
But that's what I, but that's what I was saying, but since it's park and rec, can he, um, but, but it wasn't park and rec kids last time, it wasn't, I mean, it was still our, it wasn't park and rec.
Babe Ruth was not under the park and rec umbrella at that time.
Yes, it was.
Was it at that time, okay?
We funded it through the chamber.
That's right.
You wrote a check through the chamber to give to the incentive.
Let's just do that.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, I knew it had to go through, are you good with that, Ms. Lauren, like we did last time?
Basically, we have to amend our contract and do that, but...
But I don't think we have to do that this time, because this is park and rec, this is our stuff, it can just come through, can it just be a...
So we can just go through the park and rec, we don't have to send it to the chamber, and let the chamber write the check?
Yeah, since it's park and rec, yeah.
Alright.
So, so what, what is the, um, are we doing the same thing we did last time, what was it, a four hundred to the team?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
What, what are we gonna do, guys? And, and I hope they all make that deal, and don't take me the wrong way, he says he's got six more teams that could get to the World Series. What are you gonna do?
He said three.
Okay.
Three more teams.
You've got, are we gonna give them the four hundred also, out of his earmarked funds, or then we start taking away?
Is that through park and rec as well?
Yes, ma'am, all, pretty much all baseball this year has been through park and rec.
So, I mean, I, we, we need to, uh, we need to think about this. I mean, I, I think what we need to do, because when I was involved in Babe Ruth, uh, Mr. Doug Murphy, and the city always done what we're doing here.
If they all make it, you're looking at sixteen hundred dollars, I don't think it's...
Okay, I'm just making, I just want everybody to understand, so we all don't get up here and say, no, yeah, you go, yeah.
The last kids, the last kids, we through park and rec as well, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, this is what I'm saying, if it's through park and rec, city, um, funds park and rec, if you wanna give it out of your budget, then I support that.
Then, do you...
So you get with Alex within the amount, she'll write the check?
Yeah, I support that, because I mean, that, that's how...
Do they have to approve in the amount?
I would recommend they just can say in the amount.
For each, for each one that makes it to the World Series.
Yeah.
Then they get the four hundred off.
Because that makes sense, though, so that way, I mean, and we're not giving money to a private entity.
That's right.
Through park and rec.
We don't have to mend contracts and all that, the money's already there.
Correct, just get with the city clerk, and y'all get your numbers worked out.
Do I have to approve that number tonight before you write a check?
They do.
I would say same with the four hundred.
It's basically, because there are few, it's basically just... And I'll need to recuse myself, my child's on one of those potential teams, so, um, I'll need to recuse myself.
We would, we would only vote on it as it come up.
Yeah, we're only voting these two.
Okay, I didn't do, I thought we were like...
And also, yes, we don't have to cut them a check until next meeting, by the way, because then I'm leaving for the night.
But, and I think the question was just how to do it, but that just makes sense to do it for...
That's right.
If Steve, so now they want it, they have to ask Steve.
And we can vote on it on the second of July.
Okay.
So it's really just changing, um, yeah, it's just coming out of his line, I... Alright. Alex?
Everything else was done except for the page we skipped, which was page twenty-seven, Ms. Alex.
What about this running total since sales taxes increased? That's the page I'm on.
Yes. Um, that's to let the city council know where everybody is as far as the running balance right now.
So these are up-to-date numbers?
These are up-to-date numbers as of, uh, the first of June, yes.
And this is what, so there is only one that's still in the way yet?
There is only one still in the way.
That's correct.
Alright. Any questions on these, y'all? Alright, so we're ready for the next page?
Ready?
Alright, so the next page is, um, I asked Alex to include this in, because I didn't, I didn't really understand it. And it's the, um, and Walter, this question is gonna be for you. Um, we may wanna show Walter the page, so I know what we're talking about, it's the estimated underwriting fee, and it has some bullet points on here, um, it's saying, uh, analysis needed to prepare rating strategies and presentations related to series twenty twenty-four warrants, attend sports complex, um, sports complex planning meetings, uh, attended, um, architectural meeting regarding recreational facility costs. So the reason I'm asking about this, because this list is saying like past tense. So are you just saying that these are things that you've done for the city, or did you include this in your calls to be compensated for? I don't think that's what this says.
Would you like to see it, Walter?
It's just, it was just a question about this page, and, um, I think that...
It was in the proposal that you sent to us.
We just wanna make sure.
Lee, do you hear anything on this?
I know, but it's...
Hey, you gonna ask a question?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, um, make sure, um, because there was a question about this page, so Alex showed you the page. So these are just things that you were saying that you've done for the city in the past on your own time? It, it has nothing to do with your fee schedule, right?
It, it doesn't have anything to, everything that in my fee schedule encompasses all the things I've done for the city. Walter, it's just a wording. Walter, it's just a wording, the discount will be Piper's compensation for all the services, blah, 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 that, that wording, we couldn't parse it.
Yeah, because it sounds like-
Sounds like you're charging for what you've done in the past, attended sports flex planning meeting, attended this.
And I'm thinking it's you're just reminding us that you've done this,
Yes.
there's no cost for it.
That, that, no, no, well, no, it isn't a cost for it, but, but I've been under a G seventeen engagement letter since two thousand sixteen.
What is that?
And it's been, this has been going back eight years, working on this particular project, you know, there, and then these are just some of the things that will transpire over, over a period of time, in terms of, of actuating, you know, the, the discount or percentage that I've asked for, you know, there.
But is it a part, but, do you understand? Okay, so it is, um,
So it is.
It is included if it's awarded, yes, that's what, that's what that says, I, I thought it was something else. Okay, alright, any questions about that? Alright. Okay. Alright, so what's this next one, um? Alex?
That was the baseball?
Oh, yeah.
We were already talking about it. We talked about everything already.
Okay. Alright, so, so I think we need to, um, I think we need to, are we gonna have to have a special meeting, or at least add an extra hour to the next work session, because I don't know if the work session is already loaded, from looking at your board, we already have a few things on there, because once we award this, um, the underwriter thing tonight, we're gonna have to prioritize this list, yes, and also, um, decide how much money we're gonna go to the bond for.
So, are you wanting to just do the underwriter tonight, and put the amount on the next agenda?
Well, we're gonna have, we can't, it's, we're, we're gonna have to tell them the amount, whoever is awarded, we have to tell them.
Well, we can discuss that, we can solidify that at the next meeting.
Okay, so do you guys, can you come an hour early for the next meeting, or no?
Yeah.
So can you start the next meeting at four, and that can be an hour for that, so we're gonna prioritize this list, as well as decide on an amount that we're gonna actually go to the, um,
Could be taking that off? They take off and push to the next meeting?
Or do we wanna do it now, I mean, we're already at six twenty-four?
I mean, I, I do it either way, whenever you all want.
I think it's gonna take some time, I don't think this is something that we can decide tonight, so we- Alright, so Alex, number eighteen, let's put it on next meeting, we're gonna start that meeting at four, and we're also gonna have to get with, um, with Steve.
We also know, what I was bringing up earlier about the fire departments, they've owned a used truck for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and, um, we're gonna have to add on it, you know, I don't know if it'll still be available by next meeting or not.
But weren't, isn't, so Nate, I know this isn't on the agenda, but-
Well, if, if, if we need to wait and get into the nitty-gritty of it, let's wait and get into the nitty-gritty of it.
Yeah, so let, well, let me ask you this first, so is all the stuff that we had down, is it back working now, or no?
If everything is back functional for the time being.
That's what I was thinking, okay, okay, that's what I was thinking.
Good job, Ed.
But with, with, whatever the future discussion holds, I know that you had mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, you had mentioned used, you know, is there something out there that we can get our hands on to, to help us in the immediate, so, uh, Williams Fire, which is the subfin dealer, uh, they, they actually have one over at, at the station, that is a used truck that they, that they had from, uh, another department that traded in, so if y'all want to, you know, just lay eyes on one, you know, af, after the meeting's over, you know, by all means, it's there available.
How long have you had it?
He, he just brought it over just, just for tonight.
Oh, okay.
Is that, is that one your proposal, we may try to purchase, chief?
Potentially, depending on, you know.
So that means Ed, we need to look over to make sure we can get all the parts, and we can work on it, we can get everything we need?
He's, he's seen the, the subfins that Williams puts out, and he went over to, to Williams with me,
Okay.
and, and, you know, like I said, this is just, just, I, I've mentioned to him beforehand that, you know, who was over there, so I think we can still find a look at it also, but I just wanted y'all to know.
How, well, you have it here, oh, no.
It, it will be here, look at after the meeting, if it's ever there.
And it, you've, you've seen this particular truck, and you had to see this particular truck? Okay.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm sorry.
Uh, you're good, so, so Nate, but, I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole with you, um, so if you're proposing that we buy this truck, so this isn't gonna replace the brand-new truck, this isn't a brand-new truck, right?
Go over there so I can, I can speak a little easier, so, I, I keep hearing from the conversations that I've had, this term of a stock truck, there is no such thing in the fire department world as a stock fire engine, they, they are all made to order. Now, sometimes dealers will throw one in the line based off of whatever spec they, they so choose, so that when it comes out of the line, they have one that's on the free market, so to speak, but there's, there's no parking lot full of stock trucks to go look at and purchase. That, that doesn't exist, and the term stock truck is just not an accurate term that keeps being said.
Okay, but back to the truck, there's a-
So, 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 we know that the truck that we've already signed the purchase agreement on, um, you know, is a while out, and regardless of what we do moving forward, it's going to take time, so one of the thoughts was, you know, potentially to look at a used truck that we could get into quickly and cheaply to help us get by in the, in the immediate, while we address also the long term, and when I say long term, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years down the road in them. So, that was, and, and-
And thi, and thi, and this truck that you have might help you in the event that the trucks that you broke can break again?
Absolutely.
Because you're gonna be feeling it for a whole time.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, one of the nineteen eighty-six, I was even born in nineteen eighty-six, and the other one is two thousand-
We have an O, O-six and a fourteen.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we can get into the nitty-gritty of, of, you know, proposed ways of, of handling this, but, you know, I, I, I heard just through the grapevine and in conversations, you know, well, we're, you know, the, the truck we signed the purchase agreement on was, you know, nine ninety-eight, you know, and, and I heard somebody saying something to the effect of, well, we can almost buy two for the price of one, and that's probably not inherently true, there are probably somewhat cheaper options out there, but this isn't, and I'll use a kind of a conversation that Ash and I have, this isn't, this isn't a Honda rolling down the assembly line where you have a base trim package and a high-end trim package, you know, there, there are different manufacturers for a reason, and that's because different manufacturers have pros and cons to their trucks, and this particular truck was actually looked at by a committee of six fire department members, two from each of our three shifts, that was formed, and met numerous times, we visited and looked at a vast array of different fire engines that are, you know, serviced in this area, and the subfin was decided on unanimously, might I add, by the committee as the best-looking, most well-built truck that's going to meet our needs, and the great added addition that Williams Fire is located in Ashland, so if we need service and support, we have home base in our backyard, nowhere else has that, I mean, the next closest fire truck manufacturer that, you know, has a, a full-blown fire truck service center would be going to Bessemer. So, you know, Ed, and, and we've already kinda started down that road, you know, he, he has been able to use Williams to, you know, buy trucks, or buy parts for some of our current trucks, to help us get it back on the road a little bit quicker, but if it's anything that goes beyond the scope of what our shop can do, having that, that, even if, even if we don't necessarily send our trucks there for everything, which, we have a city shop, so we shouldn't be sending it there for everything, but even if we, even if we're not necessarily sending them there for everything, just having the support bases twenty miles up the road, I mean, if we really get into a pinch, and we have one of their trucks, we can send somebody over there to pick up a part, if it's that big of a deal. So, you know, there's, there's a, a support base there that I think is very, very valuable compared to anything that we currently have.
Well, thanks for sharing that, Nate. Is there anything, um, so, we're taking eighteen off, and I guess we need to, um, discuss number nineteen.
Is that one you're gonna vote on, like, how are we voting on that, nomination?
Let me see. So I guess we need to decide, um, I guess we need to decide in the work session, who's gonna be awarded, yeah, because it's not gonna be, um, it's not a nom, yeah, it's not a nomination thing. Alright, so, um, and we'll start
one by one, um, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I, I'll go first, um, I have no, uh, I have, I do have a couple issues, I almost don't have any issues, I think, um, the underwriter is a fine person, I think the company is, uh, gonna cost us two hundred thousand dollars more per the proposals that was, uh, provided to us last week, or last council meeting, and I will, uh, like to, um, go with Frazier and Lanier, they have done business with this city for a couple of years before twenty sixteen, they done business with, uh, Mr. Jason Cleveland when he was mayor, they done business when Mr. John Ham was the city clerk, they, uh, done a good job, and they are more cost-efficient for our city, and I can't go to bed at night knowing that I didn't put us in the best financial shape by taking the, um, the firm that's gonna charge us six dollars per thousand, rather than the firm that's gonna charge us twelve dollars and fifty cents per thousand. So that would be, if my calculations are right, I think it's two hundred thousand dollars cheaper, and, and Walter, you're a fine person, and I'm sure your company does a fine job, but I, as a city councilman, I have a job to do, my job's to look out for the taxpayers' money, and that, that's going to be my recommendation, now, I know we are all, uh, civilized and good people, we all have our own thoughts, but that's, that's what I'll be voting for tonight, Ms. Nick, and if that is not who we choose to go for, then my vote will be no.
Okay, alright, Ashton, you have any thoughts?
Uh, no, I, I would be in support of Walter and his firm, um, I've just worked with him since twenty sixteen, since I was here, have been here, and, um, he, he has, you know, more recently been with us, and there's, would be no learning curve coming in with these people, and kinda knows what to expect, and I just would be in favor of Walter and Piper Jaffrey.
Alright, um, Laura, I feel comfortable using Walter as well.
Lee, do you have any, um?
I think Walter is the, Walter and Piper, the only logical choice, we have, uh, efficiency built up with them, there's a lot of knowledge that's inbred in what we're doing, and we'll make sure we hit our goals on schedule, and I believe Walter can bring a lot of value engineering that's not understood in any of the proposals.
Okay, well, I have to say that, um, Piper and Jeffrey is not my choice, but it seems like they have the majority, so that's who will go in the, um, that's who will go on the line item, so that's who, um, will power to do the u- underwriting for the city's syllable. We agree?
Is it Piper?
Piper's name?
Alright, so is there any more discussion on the work session?
I have a question, um, there is a new phone system for the city, did, when did we, the council, come before the council with proposals, and, um, for us to enter into contract and agree that with this new company?
I think that was the-
What company was it?
It's, uh, I don't, I don't, let me find the name of it.
Well, what's it for?
But, uh, we're, you, we're getting rid of the, apparently the utilities for phone service, and-
Phones are?
Yes, and using this company now, but I don't remember it coming before, I just wanted a big refresh when it came before us with proposals, and-
But that isn't something that has to come before, is, is it Alex, and I think that's the mayor's decision.
No ma'am, as long as it's in my budget, and there is a cost savings.
I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
We're saving eleven hundred dollars a month?
I don't agree with that, that's not correct, you should not be making purchases without the council approving the contracts, and it means-
Uh, well, they already, they already have a line item for the services, so the mayor-
Just because it's budget, doesn't mean they can buy it.
We have to post a contract, I think, for the mayor to sign, like, I mean, what other contracts do we not know about? That are being signed and acted on.
Alright, so we, um, we've shared our thoughts on that, um, anything else for the work session agenda?
I think we're good.
Alright, so we're gonna start the next meeting at four o'clock, right, and we're gonna take number eighteen off of the, um, this work session.
What, what number is it on the?
It's number eighteen on the work session, um, I don't, it's not, it's not on there, it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be on there.
Oh, okay.
It's only on the work session, so we're just gonna take a special hour just for that.
Cool.
Yeah, and then we're gonna take the, um, yeah, so we're gonna take the dollar amount, do we need to change the wording? Alright, so just take out total, alright, this would be, okay. So do we need to take out that sentence, this will be paid from the city's general's burden, I think we do need to change the wording. Because we're not paying.
Just to make sure the resolution doesn't have the language in it, the specific letters.
So we need to change this on the petition, this is a petition, I'll be asking you to replace the services of this, right, some architecture, city code. Alright, so we're taking out, except that sentence, that one is too. Alright, so I know that was a pretty long work session, so we'll take a, um, y'all thinking five or ten minute, um, for five-minute breaks, bathroom break, just let everybody stand, stretch, and then, um, we'll come back, we'll see you guys in five minutes, if you need to go to the restroom, or get a drink of water, stand up, stretch a little.